It's my pleasure to have Fabian Thies give the first keynote in this session, which is single cell methods. So Fabian has really been at the forefront of development in single cell gene expression modeling. And I've been following his work closely because he's been working on using Gassian processes and GPLVMs. He was one of, I guess, the first person to use GPLVMs in this context.
For QPCR, yeah.
Single cell biology and has always been really pushing the computational side. So it's really great to have him here and give this first talk.
Thanks, Magnus, for the kind invitation. Please let me know if this is quiet, then I'll try to shout even more. So yeah, it's a very honor to be able to deliver the first keynote. Thanks for coming so early after what I heard was a conference dinner yesterday. Maybe it was the rain that drove you home early enough to come now to talk. In any case, I appreciate it. So I briefly want to speak what we have been doing on single cell RNA-seq. Because I think there are more talks on that. I also have a few introductory slides on, yeah, a little bit of the data and the questions that the team has at the moment, I guess. So let me start. Well, originally, I think, for a long time, how to model single cell decisions. And this is actually how we went into that. So we really had some very small old-school systems biology questions where we really been looking into distributions of transcription, of particular transcription factors, long tails, how distribution steady state, how maybe two different speakers battle it out, so very small scale models. And then later we started exploring this. So for starting this Mylot question, you want to ask how this, at the time seemingly homogeneous common model progenitor would develop into, let's say, a granulosite, going down these lineages. And of course, the ideal data for analyzing such a thing would be a time-resolved data, right? Where you actually really follow a single cell's identity over time, which actually also over its progeny when it starts dividing. And of course, there are techniques for that. In a longstanding collaboration with the Schröder Lab from now ETH, we've been looking at single cell continuous time data via time-matched microscopy. So there you actually follow a cell's fate and its progeny. And so his lab was pioneering techniques through this over 10 generations and not sort of losing track of the cell, which is, you know, blood that's sort of fast-moving everything. And we got a few quite nice insights, first from type of analysis to really so could process all of these large-scale trees and analyzing these things. But then we applied this, for example, to after eight or nine generations of trees and every extent of differentiation where a single protein, a protein factor called nano, it was known to be fluctuating, where you were asking for how long it takes to reconstitute then the hybrid. And initially, it's turned off, but at the end it sort of has this broad spectrum and you could then set up a population model for describing these slower transition. Initially, it was thought that this was slightly rather fast. And in a recent work, we've been looking at two transcription factors, exactly those two Q1 and G1 that are battling it out, and then form two distinct sub-populations, which are precisely these two branches that I showed you at the beginning. So what we learned from the time of data was, in fact, that these two factors are not actually driving the decision, but only come up later and are only mediating sort of this separation of the lineages. But early on, at this particular phase, there was already a heterogeneous population. And quite recently, we've been sort of trying to do a bit more machine learning on also using the morphometry data. We tried to ask, just looking at cells at some downstream point where the decision has already been happening, can we predict earlier on, using this time-resolved morphometry pictures, when the cell would go to the left or to the right in any decision? And for this, we set up essentially a combination of a convolutional neural network with some type of recursive architecture to really see how early you can learn this decision. And it turned out that even up to three generations, the color of the marker for the one or the other lineage turns on, morphometry already tells you this thing. So this was basically rich data, but of course, more actually, you just learn about two factors, right? At most, maybe three or four, because you have to build through its proteins, you have to, I usually grow mice expressing these, and then you maybe learn about two things. And it turns out that those two things actually are driving your decision, it's kind of not so nice for modeling. So what we asked is, can we use snapshot data, where we can actually increase the dimension to also learn something about the dynamics in that process? So let's say if you just use facts data, and then of course later, we're speaking about this single cell RNA-seq, which has a lot of cells maybe measured, but doesn't connect them over time, can we still learn something about the dynamic of processes? And I guess that's one of my key goals today. I want to basically discuss how we can estimate the average temporal dynamics just from snapshot data. Before, speaking about single cell RNA-seq, this is one morphometry example, just because it shows you already that also based on morphometry, you can do these things. So this is a collaboration with the Carpenter Lab from Broad, where we initially just looked at features that her self-propelled software was generating, and we trained, classified on top of that, and more recently used the following approach. And this is, this is a machine that essentially is like a fax, but takes images of cells. Okay, so you have, in this case, you just take a cell, like with different cell cycles, say, from frozen cells, we know the different states in cell cycle. We ask the question, based on the morphometry of those cells, can we predict the different cell cycle stages? So we just feed it through a rather standard, a little bit deeper CNN, and then in the end, we just have this classification problem in the various cell cycle phases. And for this, we really just take a binary, so zero, one loss function, so we don't know anything about adjacency of various spaces. So we just a very plain classification problem we want to do. And then I just visualize, you know, the last day and TSC, to see how this decision boundaries evolve. So if we do that, we get actually fantastic classification rates, much better than if you just use this feature-based approach and sample, which is known, right, that this data should be expected. But what is maybe not so unexpected is this development in the last days. What you see here is each of these dots would be a single cell that we trained on. And now I just show you this last layer without actually now anything learned yet. So the colors would be the different cell cycle phases, from G1, S2, and now we just visualize the training across the various epochs. And you see that slowly, this network is trying to learn a linear representation of what this dynamic process cell cycle is. As you see, you really see now transition through the various phases up to late Taylor phase, where of course you don't have as many cells. So you really see, although we went just this speed data, this type of dynamic thing. There was some type of outlier, you could check what's going on in this outlier, indeed it was a duplicate, so in that the sorting didn't work. So even this type of things, the network automatically put in a separate category. So that was quite promising for us, that just based on this type of static data, obviously, right? We did not follow now, as we did before, a cell's dynamics over time, we just had static data, but we still were able to actually learn some type of dynamic process. So if you didn't know, which in this case, obviously, you do, but if you didn't know anything about cell cycle, I guess you would see, if you look at the data, well, there seems to be some type of dynamics in the thing, although we just got snapshot data. This is a special case, it's where we have an agoric system, so there's no dynamics, some development is still happening, but still, I mean, this has, this is something that people have been noticing. I just want to mention that those students that actually did the work, they just sort of upscaled their deep learning processes and actually got into the winning ranks of this data science forum, actually started funding a company, not doing PhDs, I know how this, often this happens to you, but, well, they did a good job in any case. But the question I want to say is, yeah, can we learn something about these snapshot observations? We're not the first to ask this. Yeah.
Is that better? Sorry for that. Okay, so I can look there, I guess. Yeah, okay, so I shouldn't walk around as much. So I wanted to say, so we want to learn from snapshot, we want to basically learn, snapshot observation, we want to basically learn something about dynamics, right? And we're not the first to observe this. There has been, from the Kershen Lab, there's been a thing called agoric rate analysis, and there have been also in the biomed field, some early ideas about that, where you basically say, okay, let's say, in this case, he has two, I think, fax colors, where he observes also cell cycle, and he can basically now say, this type of trajectory, we know in which state we are, then he can normalize cells along that. But what we want to do now, of course, instead of looking at morphometry, we want to go towards transcriptome data, right? So we want to really have a more unbiased description, or putative, unbiased description of cellular state. And just sort of the really simple selling picture that you typically show to that, and sorry for that, is of course, you know, in RNA sequencing, typically we just have a lot of bulk data, which you can imagine as sort of a well-mixed things of a few hundred thousand cells or so, and ideally, you want to sort of deconvolve that and really get sort of the full food salad with the single cell RNA-seq. This is adapted from Abby's slides. But I think what was nice about it, and just recently, you might have seen that news and views about this promise of using single cell RNA-seq, or maybe also spatial transcriptomics to really delineate, as in microscopy, cell types in a potentially even spatial resolved fashion, so they call this a genetic microscope, and obviously, you get more information about it. Why is this, why is this so much exploding? I mean, five years ago, I think, by informatics, we didn't really so much focus on that, but I think with the data accuracy and in particular size expanding, in particular because of these microfluidic approaches, in particular this droplet-based approaches, the size, the pure size of the data, the number of cells where we get transcriptomes, was exploding from, I think initially, I think the first paper was published in Nature Star with, I think, more than only, like, maybe only 10 cells. Now we're getting more than tens of thousands, there's even a dataset out with a million cells, a million transcriptomes to process that really needs you to think again about crunching. So what's the type of analysis you want to do with this type of data? This is taken from a review from Rick Sandberg. I think the promise is quite clear, right? So you have here your healthy tissue, and you want to compare this, for example, to pathological situation, where you have a few outlier cells, and obviously, if you now made your nice smoothie, you might not really see what was sort of going on differential with that particular small cell type, but if you do single cell RNA sequencing, then, as is so nicely pictured here, you make some expression clustering, and then maybe you make a dimension reduction in, maybe a nonlinear one, to produce what he calls cell type maps. And then if you sort of cluster close by cells with similar color, then you see that there's, in this pathological situation, something pops up, and that's your new cell type, and you find it this way. And while this sounds rather straightforward from where your approach is, actually, there's quite a series of computational challenges, I think, we're still dealing with nowadays, which sort of has been solved, I guess, more on the bike setting, so even the preprocessing, because of all sort of slight variations of protocols, you might really want to think about new noise models. And later, I just want to maybe highlight one idea we've been using for modeling particular processes, that dropout, to properly understand what's happening. Visualization, just this dimension reduction, you might need to adapt to particular noise situation, we don't have any normally distributed data here anymore, so your standard PCA only goes so far. Clustering, I think, a year ago, a recent single cell genomics conference, I think half of the computational talks were about redeveloping a clustering algorithm, right? And even a few, quite a few papers have been coming out, just with new metrics and playing around with that. And then, of course, differential comparison, something that, you know, on the bike, I mean, you would just most simple setting, do a t-test or something a little bit more fancy. In this case, you know, you just, a simple average test doesn't cut it anymore, because of course, your mean or median might be the same, but your variance is changing or some more complex thing, so there, I think, also people still working on that. And that's of course, a series of downstream analysis to be done. So what I want to talk about today, there's so much for the intro, what I want to talk about today is briefly about this lineage estimation from static, I think, single cell RNA-seq, this is something we published last year, so I try to be quick there. And then I want to see how, I want to tell you how we extend this towards single cell RNA-seq time series. And if there's time, I want to briefly speak about a statistical model that's been trying to set up to actually do, analyze sub-populations that are differential cross conditions. So the work I'm presenting, in the first part, is work by talent PhD, Lale Hakweri in the lab, who moved on last year as a postdoc in John Marioni's lab in Cambridge. So the goal that we initially had was that we wanted to visualize this sort of latent matrix structure. Initially, we've been playing a lot with Gaussian process latent variable models, as Magnus was mentioning. In this case, we were asking, because already in the GPLVM visualization, we saw sort of nice type of transitions, if we can maybe describe these transitions more explicitly. So her idea was essentially to look in this high-dimensional transfer space, embed the cells, but because we have many of those cells, right, we don't only hopefully see a blob, but maybe some type of process that's being formed. And since we've been interested in development for a long time, let's say, we have some type of sort of progenitor cell type here, that sort of goes along some trajectory and then has sort of this branching decision into subsets. And the simple approach that we've been taking, which is called diffusion maps, a lot of you might know about this, is really straightforward. So you just take, you start at some place, then you look at the cellular dynamics by just looking at many random walks that walk along this manifold, and you basically just jump to close by cells with a high probability, so basically just put a diffusion kernel on top of that. So you produce this type of transition matrix here, okay? So you just take, for example, Gaussian kernel, here we played around a bit with more complex noise models, does help a bit, particularly if you include dropout, but so far, did not really resolve so much. So in this case, the Gaussian process framework was doing quite well. So you jump to close by cells, and you see here, there seems to be a big jump, that might be just cells sort of going in a different sub-lineage. And what we're doing now is that if you now superimpose all of those random walks that go along this manifold, then we get a formation of dense regions where most of those random walks go, walk by. And to visualize this now, we just take this transition matrix and make an eigenvalue decomposition and project along the first two eigenvalues belonging to the highest eigenvalues, taking away the first one. Then you see that the dominant process in this transition kernel is actually exactly this axis, and then the second dominant one, the second diffusion component, is then this thing orthogonal to that. So in contrast to PCA, where you look at the covariance matrix, you take this thing here, and clearly, it's a nonlinear process, and you can basically resolve some of these transition, transitions. What you have to be sort of a bit careful is if this is not as nicely homogeneously sampled as it is here, so we've been extending this simple diffusion map framework that has been proposed by Kohlmann maybe 10 years or so ago, towards a local adaptive kernel choice, which was really sort of increasing our resolution at parts where we have sort of very fast transitioning cells. And yeah, just maybe to show you that this work, let me show an example in a collaboration with the Gottkins Lab from MRC in Cambridge. So in this case, Bertie has been sorting cells from various developmental stages of mouse embryos, where we've been interested in blood development. So if you're in this primitive streak, you basically just take all cells, and at this headfall stage, you know that there's a subset of cells now going towards more blood-like cells, where this Ranks 1 is activated, and there's a more putative endothelial subtype. In this case, we just did QPCR, but of 4,000 cells, and we were trying to see if we now sort of capture this type of branching here. Initially, if you just look at the data, so here you have your number of transcription factors, targeted assay, so you basically chose those from bike knowledge, and here you have your different cells, you see that you find sort of a subgroup, these colors correspond to the colors up there. So you find a subgroup that's definitely blood-like, and if you check the markers, you have exactly Ranks 1 and other blood-like factors strongly up-regulated, but the rest is more and more salt and pepper, so you really didn't see that much of a structure. So if you do now these diffusion maps, and obviously, it worked, otherwise, I would be showing you this, so you see exactly this type of branching that you would sort of initially assume because of that sorting. And what is maybe nice to appreciate is, you see this big cluster that we saw before in the hierarchical clustering, but then you also see sort of this small branch point here, towards more endothelial-like cells, and then you see also that these seemingly sort of different stages, which, you know, they have been sorted just maybe like half of an embryo day apart, seem to be asynchronous, so there seem to be some cells that are sort of further up, further down the lineage, and that's why all of these different sort of discrete sortings are actually overlapping. If you do PCA, just for comparison, you see sort of this main dynamics, but you don't see the branching. And if you do things such as T-sne or so, that are very popular in the field, it clearly, as I'm sure you're aware, very often for this sort of connected processes, actually tears things apart, and you'd really have to play around quite a lot of parameters to really get that, to do what you want. So initially, I said, I actually want to learn something about the dynamic process of, that's encoded in this static data. And what you see is here, that maybe that there seems to be some type of time that you might potentially be able to infer from that static picture. And this is an idea that has been, I think, been around in the field, particularly also on bike, for quite some time. And the idea is that, and I think Cole, then, Coltrup Nell, then actually coined this as pseudo-temporal ordering, and he was the first to actually do this for single cell RNA-seq, two years or three years ago, in his paper, Monaco. So in this case, what he simply, what he simply did was a dimension reduction of the transcript space, and then just fitted a minspan tree to the data. And then you just say, the major branch, so the two cells that are farthest apart, are then sort of your spanning trajectory, and then you might see some type of branching off, and then you assign basically just position along this minspan tree as a pseudo-time. This is something that sort of worked quite well initially, but you can clearly see that there's a series of issues, right? Taking a minimum is not the most robust thing, and then also the dependence on the dimension reduction and so on. There have been other ideas. Dana Per proposed this wonderfully named method, Wanderlust, where she basically also has on a low-dimensional manifold cells transitioning to close by cells in the shortest path type of regime, and then to basically make them avoid taking shortcuts, she sort of forces them to sort of be again on the big manifold, and she's extended this towards branching. But our idea was, we want to basically stay in this diffusion framework, we don't want to do the dimension reduction to start with, and I think this was actually quite straightforward extension of this diffusion map idea for visualization, now we use this for transitioning. So the idea is, we want to now, essentially, all of these pseudo-time things are nothing more than some type of geodastic distance that you want to define on this differentiation differential manifold, right? So we're just speaking about distances. And a good measure basically doesn't care about outlying cells, which there are a lot in single cell RNA-seq. So essentially, we want to define some type of transition probability from maybe the cell X to cell Y, and we encode this in this matrix MXY, we start up here, and now, we just don't look at the transition probability of a single random walk, but we look at random walks of any length. So in contrast to previous ideas that have been purely based on shortest paths, we basically look at all random walks and aggregate and sort of weigh them accordingly. We just accumulate this type of transition probability, and thereby get some type of, I guess, scale-free representation of this process. And we have to, yeah, I showed them in, but, so if you look now at this type of transition matrix M, we simply define this distance now as the difference of the transitions of some cell X to all others compared to another cell transitioning to all others. So basically, just compare columns of this matrix, and we define this as a distance. So clearly, this sort of behaves as a normal distance, it's not Euclidean, and we can actually see that it has sort of a series of nice properties. It's kind of costly though, right? Because you have to accumulate all of these transition probabilities, and initially, that's why people have been sort of focusing on shortest path and then some sort of sampling. But because this is all based on Markov properties, actually, it was quite straightforward then to really calculate this more easily. So essentially, we look at this transition kernel, as I showed you before, we have to remove steady state, otherwise this thing wouldn't converge. We now just take the k-th power, this would be now a walk starting at cell H, taking k steps, and we just sum up all of this. So this is essentially the matrix that we want to look at. And of course, this is a geometric series, right? So we can actually solve this in closed form without any approximation. If it gets really high-dimensional, you might want to do some eigenvalue decomposition before, but actually, it doesn't really improve all that much. So how do we identify branches so far? We have a good distance measure to go to actually towards branches. We now start at, let's say, two points X and Y, and we want to see if Z branch is off, so we just now determine this type of measure along this line, we determine another measure that goes the other direction, and it stays anticorrelated across the same branch, and obviously, something branches the way it sort of turns into correlated order. So that was sort of a very ad hoc way of defining branching for us. And particularly, you can also then sort of naturally define a region where you're not so sure about the branching, so you have sort of a set of cells that are kind of undecided. And this was our admittedly ad hoc definition based on that distance. We can sort of formalize it a bit more, you measure correlation by Kendall's tau, and this is sort of, I think, a good way of testing for significance is there. But let me just show you what you get if you do this on that data. Remember, this was this branching between the more endothelial, more blood-like cells. So if we now fit this type of branching model, and we just follow cells through these times, we exactly identify branching process here, go into this one, the other lineage, and if we now apply this sort of reordering to this salt and pepper heat map that you saw before, suddenly, you get really nice type of transitions. So along this line before, it was just basically just picked up this state, now you see sort of sequence of nice transitions, and if we order now this set of genes by first turning on, turning off, you see a series of sort of turning off and on of developmental factors that are very well-known in that developmental field. So that was quite nice. And we implemented that in our package Destiny, invite you to try this out. So this is what we have, what we have been doing so far. Now let me, let me discuss how we want to extend this to time-series data, as I said before. So so far, mostly what is being done, if you actually have replicates in single cell RNA-seq, or if you have time, or if you have potentially spatial resolution, quite often, we still more or less ignore that information. Initially, mostly because we didn't actually have replicates, and then we only had like two. But essentially, what's being done is, if you have maybe one-on-one batch, you just maybe do a dimension reduction, you find your clusters, you keep going from there. If you have multiple of those, you just integrate them in the same plot, you basically drop the thing, maybe you do some type of normalization before, but then you keep working on the integrated data set. And if you have multiple time points, you again, usually just project them in there. But there might be maybe more to be done on that. So let me just summarize maybe two ideas that are out. So I think this, as I said before, is just this joint embedding, so just for an example, because I will be using this in a minute, we've been looking at this Interop dataset from Alan Klein's lab two years ago, where essentially, mouse embryonic stem cells have been taken at time zero, then this growth condition, LIF, was removed, they start sort of differentiating in downstream, little bit, also lineages mostly just sort of not being pre-poned anymore. And what you see is, if you compare to discrete time point, a few transcription factors that go up and down, where you can sort of make also continuous process, and you see this dynamics and diffusion map, and you see now that we embed these various time points, we just embed them in this single mapping. So just as I said before, you basically ignore the time axis, or if you want, you can maybe later correlate your state estimation via this, for example, pseudo-time, with the time labels, but you sort of only use the time labels afterwards, right? Initially, you just sort of normalize them away. A few years ago, actually, our first paper on GPLVMs, we tried something a bit different on QPCR data, where we've been actually trying to extend the standard GPLVM likelihood by some type of data prior. So you know, instead of just saying, okay, let's use this information that they actually have been taken at different time points afterwards, let's actually just throw it in and sort of make a biased dimension reduction, or, in our case, was dimension reduction, but you could also do some type of testing, whatever you want to do downstream anyways. So we basically added another term, where we wanted to be cells in the latent space as close by as they were in the original space, if they come from the same subclusters. We call this time structure dimension reduction, or I think we call it times, or maybe group structured, something like that. And essentially, if you do that, in this case, we had blastocyst development data, what we saw is that, you know, we wanted all of the cells of the same color to be close by, but one particular lineage needed to be split up to sort of nicely do the dimension reduction, and then we actually learned that there's a subset of these 16-cell stages that are sort of already closer to a downstream lineage than initially, so we actually learned something from that. But what I want to do today is not sort of put this as a prior, but actually do as we traditionally did in systems biology for a long time, when we tried to understand developmental process, namely, we just tried to set up population models. And we know that population models have quite a strong power, and if you understand how, let's say, a progenitor cell type goes into sub-lineage A, sub-lineage B with a certain dynamic property, we can actually learn something from it. So let's, let's consider this type of data, where we now, and I don't not draw cells, but just distributions, because now our sample size is hopefully getting larger. So let's say, we have our transcript space, initially, we have sort of this non-differentiated population here, and if you now take a look at later time points, maybe this sort of population moves up here and it starts sort of branching into two lineages. And if we really have now this non-stationary data in contrast to as we had before, where we can, of course, just sort of aggregate as we did before, but if we keep now this type of information, we can actually try to learn more from that. What we would do traditionally, and if this was facts, just two-dimensional, well, we would just call these three things here, we just call them maybe state A, B, and C. We just call them maybe state A, B and C, where A was the progenitor cell type. And then I guess in fact you might sort of want to do some type of gating here, which I, to tell you the truth, never understood how those gates were properly selected and what was being dropped. And I thought this was sort of a bit of a mystical black art in immunology. But, uh, in any case, what you then come up with is this type of, 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 of transition of let's say a progenitor cell type to B and, uh, B and, uh, and, and C. And you can actually really describe now the number of cells that you have in these various states by, for example, an, an ordinary differential equation. So you can actually learn, you can maybe then do model selection. You can say, okay, uh, if I now have a time series of, of, of cells in first state A, then in first state, uh, B and, and C, then I can actually learn that maybe B and C are downstream and not upstream of A. So you can actually then do some type of testing based on that. And, uh, I think the, the proper way now to think about this in this high dimensional sort of continuous space would be to say that this type of density here, that, that, that we want to, uh, look, uh, at in this continuous space is now something that depends both on, on the high dimensional transfer space, which we all want to call state space S. And, uh, also depends on time, which is my index time. And this might be maybe an, it's time evolution should be some function of, of the density. And if, if you remember those of you that have been, uh, have been listening in or were at, at the recent human cellar class meeting at Stockholm. And I'm looking at you, Oliver, so I know you were there, right? We've been actually discussing what the good notion was for a trajectory. And I, 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 I remember Eric Lender being on the stage and sort of trying to, 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 to put concepts there. And I think we ended up saying that a, a, a really good notion of trajectory, the stuff that we try to infer all the time, is actually a, a, a dynamical description of the probability density of cells moving through, through time. And that's kind of what you sort of have as, as a, as a, as a proper definition of trajectory. So this might be really our goal. And then you can sort of reinterpret this in the biological way of F being potential, sort of being Waddington's landscape. If you write it as, as a nabler of, of some potential, it's, so right F is a vector field for now. But if it's a potential, then it would be really sort of these hills and the cells rolling down and so on. So how can we get to this F? And of course, if this, uh, if, if you want to do a PDE in 10,000 plus one dimensions, it's maybe not the most clever thing, at least to start with up in issue. So we tried to be a bit more simple. So instead of 10,000 dimension, we chose, uh, one. And we did that. So that's why I told you the whole pseudo time thing before, right? So we, what we do, of course, we can sort of understand this high dimensional space by sort of, uh, uh, um, an, an index along this developmental axis, which initially we called pseudo time, sorry for that. But we now just want to call, uh, state space, because it's kind of an index of a cell sort of being more progenitor or, or downstream like, okay? And now along this, 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 this one dimensional state space, we essentially now have distributions that, that sort of move up this, uh, for the different time points. Okay? So we basically replace this thing here with now with S. We just have a dimension reduction from 10,000 to, to one or to a tree in fact, because if you, if you have branching, right? And then we try to understand this dynamic process here. So let's, let's look at that. And if we actually we're not, not the, the, the first to, to think about that, uh, sort of PDE formulation. There has been a paper from the Algo Lab doing this on, on this, uh, got a great analysis data based on Fox. And there has been, uh, a NIPS paper a year ago, where they've been using a deep learning type of description of, of fitting this, 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 this type of data. Very, very interesting. However, of course, we need, need of these two processes, you actually learn something about, about the actual cell dynamics. So what we tried to do now is this, this, this type of combination to population model, we can actually learn something potentially about growth rates and so on. So what you would do, right? As I said before, you have now this, this discrete state transitions. This would be sort of your, your original, uh, population model in a discrete setting. You would maybe describe it by some type of ODE where sort of you flow out of this compartment. You have maybe some degradation, some flow into the other compartment. But now we have this continuous, uh, uh, steady state, uh, this continuous solid state index. And instead of just cutting them up and calling discrete, we make it continuous. So the proper description of the type of density that I showed you before would be to say that the evolution of this type of probability, the cell density at state, and this shouldn't be tau, this should be S, sorry, and, and real time T, where we write up as a reaction diffusion system. That's sort of the most natural, uh, uh, simple way of, 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 of describing, uh, um, um, dynamics through a spatial system. So let me just explain the components briefly and interpret them. So, so this part here, that, that will be, uh, the diffusion part where your original, uh, um, um, density is going to be diffused with a diffusion rate, which in our case could be now cell state specific. So it could be at some parts, you sort of stay very sharp at some others, you, you, you diffuse much, much quicker. This would essentially be capturing the stochastic part of the dynamics, right? Then the, the second part is this drift part. This would be what the original ODE was sort of pushing our things forward, which in this case now is some type of vector field that pushes you towards, uh, 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 one of the maybe downstream lineages. And there might be also state specific. And then of course we have these sinks and sources where you actually, uh, uh, try to localize a, a state specific cell division and death. And of course, I mean, I, I'm writing this as, as a production degradation term. In practice, we'll be only be able to estimate the, the, the difference of the two without additional information. But because we have non stationary data, we can actually estimate this at all. If you don't have, if, if, if you just have steady state data, this stuff you won't have an access to. How do we do that? Well, I won't be able to, to, to go into details. Be happy to discuss that in coffee break. But essentially we're setting up a likelihood for this type of density. And there sort of you have all, you have this likely constraint towards this forward development of that, that PDE system. So as in classical calibration of, of ODE systems, you have basically to always solve this forward system. And to do this robustly, you have to, uh, where we do essentially gradient descent, you can also do some, some, some Bayesian version of that. But you have to de, define sensitivities of that PDE. So we really have to solve a matrix ODE type of system to really robustly determine the sensitivities. And this we did, and, uh, the, the Hasenauer lab at, at ICP has been, at our institute has been basically pushing forward a series of, of toolbox to do this in a, in a robust fashion. So if you apply this to this, uh, live, uh, removal, uh, um, you, you're in embryonic stem cell development data that I showed you before, essentially we had these four time points and we can very well fit those time points. If we leave out in particular one of the intermediate time points, we can recover and predict this time point very well. So we can show that the model is flexible enough to do that. We can actually do, um, a model selection and we see that a constant diffusion for the system is enough. So if you have a time resolved diffusion here, essentially we need to parameterize this vector fields by some splines, right? To actually describe this, this point. So we, we don't have a non primitive version of that. So we really, uh, 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 describe in such a way and we can do, because now we have a likelihood, we can say which model fits best. So it's actually here constant one is sufficient. And what we can now do and, 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 and maybe just concentrate on this plot here. We now have this diffusion pseudo time on, 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 on this, on this diffusion map. And with the color here, I just indicate now a time point zero where the cells are located. And up here just show the one dimensional reduction of that and, and the true data set sort of highlighted. And because now we have a fully dynamic process, we can actually interpolate. So we can actually draw, make a movie of cells at any time point, moving through this type of, uh, Waddington's landscape differentiation setting, if you want to be fancy. So what you see is that these, 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 these distributions evolve over time and they, they try to, to interpolate these, these, these various time points. So essentially what you get is a link of the pseudo time or, or, or state, pseudo state and the actual real time. And you can basically look back at which time point you had, which type of sharpness. And particularly if you, let's say, want to now determine optimal time point for improving your differentiation protocols or something like that. This type of interpolations, particularly for experimental design might be useful, we hope. So what do we do with that? We had a, uh, we, we set up a collaboration with the Merlab from University of Massachusetts, who has been interested in thymus T cell development. I'm quite happy that this is not some immunology place, because I don't know much about immunology, but I, I was able to read reviews. So essentially this is something I just want to focus on. This may be simpler. So we, we basically, uh, want to understand how naive T cells go into, uh, first this double negative state and then they turn double positive and then it might be actually selecting these, these two phases. This, this selection we actually don't see, but this lineage is called the alpha better lineage. And then there's a, there's a branch into gamma delta T cell and natural killer cells, which we observe in our data as well. So what René has been doing together with his students was looking at mouse embryos at various time points here. So quite a lot of, 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 of embryos taken. Thymus was, was removed. We had two or three replicates at each of these time points. And we were generating, uh, using job seek, uh, and, and some subset selection, a T cell data for each of these different time points. So we ended up with roughly 11,000 cells or so, and we had replicates and all of that. And because we have now a likelihood based formulation, we can very easily now take into account replicate information, right? We can, uh, and, and we can take into account the various time points with this dynamic formulation or of the PD that I showed you before. So let's just first look at, uh, this transition space. So here we have, uh, uh, diffusion components plotted. You see there seems to be some branching and indeed you find this alpha better branch and sort of, uh, a second smaller branch that, that is this, this gamma delta and as well as natural killer cell, sub-branch. We'll be focusing on, 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 on that one to, to start with. So we try to un, understand these type of cell dynamics over time. And maybe just to appreciate it, sorry for, for, for the size. So here you see the, the state space and here you see the various embryonic days. You see that the seem, the mean seems to be evolving over the state space, but there seems to be a set of cells that keep, that are getting stuck at early cellular states. And this is not, not very astonishing, because this time is keeps training T cells that are coming in naively at also very, at late embryonic stages. So if you just analyze them as sort of a, an average continuum, you would be completely ignoring that part of the cells that, that, that is still being trained. So we try to model this and, and, and of course, even just with, with this, this, this state space ordering, if you go from actual time to this pseudo time, we see very nicely transition from double negative to double positive, which is maybe not so astonishing. But let me show you on, 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 on the gene dynamics that actually the, the type of dynamics you see very nicely reflect what has been known before. So, so this is the natural killer cell state. I just ignore this for now and, and plot you now for various surface markers, which is something that particularly immunology, Fox, people, Fox has been sort of around for a long time. People have been using a lot, uh, is sort of very well reflected of what you see in, in reviews. And this kind of reviews obviously are a bit more conceptual, I would argue. And you can now really try to map back and forth between those, uh, uh, sort of known, uh, um, um, surface markers at, at, for example, in, in this double negative, uh, stage one, two, that they sort of index them by on, on, off, off, of, of, of cells. And we can put them on, on real, uh, first this, this pseudo state space, but then also in real time by this conversion with, with the actual, uh, uh, um, um, PD that I showed you before. And because now we have of course access to the full transcriptome, we learn about known transcription factors, uh, and, and others. So let me now finally show you how we, what we get in the remaining, I think, five minutes on, uh, the, the fit of the pseudo dynamics. So for this, because we have a likelihood, we can actually include more information. What's typically being done is that at each time point you just remove a fixed now, a set of cells, but the stuff is growing. So if you really want to learn something about growth rates, you actually have to put in absolute numbers of cells as well. So we basically extended the likelihood by also including absolute numbers. And if you just fit now, the, this, this type of logistic growth function, it fits very well to the data. So we can actually now get not only relative growth, but absolute growth rates. So what we get is now the same plot as you saw before. Initially we started this early stage and we see now the, 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 basically the density transitioning through this early, uh, uh, set, set of, 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 of cells to, to this, 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 this late, uh, differentiation. And because we refitted this PDE, we cannot now ask what, uh, what type of diffusion rates and in particular type of growth rates are changing over time. And if I now plot along this axis, so along this, this state axis, I plot now the, the, the effective growth rate, which could be negative, right? Because this is this combination of growth and, growth and death. Initially, maybe let's, so, so initially it's, it's, it's sort of a bit turned off and it, it's, it's mostly constant over time. And then it keeps dropping significantly at, at late developmental stages. And that's actually something we would really expect. And for us, it's, it's something we would, we, we said that the stationarity, uh, would kind of imply that the, the death process is, is increased at this late pseudo time. And if you now map this on top of, uh, an, a cell cycle prediction based on the trans, because we have the full transcriptomes, we can basically assign cell cycles, states, percentages to each of these state spaces. We see that at late, uh, state space, there's, there's an upregulation of, uh, uh, G2 and, and M phase. So which, which gives an indication that there seems to be, uh, uh, increased, uh, uh, death rate. So our hypothesis that's ongoing from that is that this increased death process is an indication of, of maturation. And just to wrap this up, we've been, uh, now, uh, making an, uh, a, a knockout where this RAC2 is something, this is a protein that is necessary for further T cell maturation. And we see that the cells are being arrested here and they're currently fitting this to, to, to the data. So with, with this, I'm, uh, through, I, I had like two more slides on, on some, some heterogeneity analysis, where we're setting up, uh, a mixture model, uh, fitting to the data. But I think I just skipped that and maybe I can get your comments in the coffee break. Magnus, but let me just, uh, wrap up what, what we're currently doing. I mentioned the, the, the dimensionality is a, is a bit of an issue. So far we've been working with maybe five to 10, 10,000 or so cells. You can still fit a lot of these things into R, but if things get larger, where we, 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 we were not able to do this anymore. So actually recently we, we set up to, uh, to, 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 to build a package we call ScanPy, single cell analysis in Python. Maybe just re-implement a lot of that stuff in Python and just because of sort of efficiency and writing up in, in a sparse, sparse matrix form, we could already upscale this rather significantly, basically giving a speed improved five to ten fold, also being more memory efficient. So you can really sort of try to reanalyze 10 times as large data set with kind of a, a, a similar time point. This is open, we, we invite you to, 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 to look at it and maybe potentially contribute to that. And here just, just one plot where I've been trying to do this on this 1.3 million data set, where 10 X just put out and we, we cannot only calculate T-sne with sort of finer resolution. They always had to sub sample, but we can also determine diffusion maps and, and, and so on. And the second part we, we currently, uh, uh, extending, because now we have this sort of really dense, uh, deep, uh, data, is to actually go to more, more deep branching type of, 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 of things. And, uh, you know, initially I, I showed you this very simple branching criterion. You can make this hierarchical, but it starts getting not really robust. And I'm, I'm looking forward, I think there's a Gaussian process branching talk later. For us, it's really getting important that we see a sort of very deep downstream, downstream branches. And when we have data set around where it's sort of the downstream tips, you can very easily identify, for example, for Planaria, we're looking at this together with the Efske lab. And you really see, I think maybe 10 different downstream cell types, which should sort of all come from a single progenitor type. But if you, to really follow the traces, it's just too much salt and pepper in the middle. We're coming up with some heuristics, we call graph abstraction. That's something that has been around in math for some time, which is essentially sort of a, a good summary of, 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 of nearest neighbor graphs. But it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a non approximate method. We try to make it approximate because you have so noisy data. So with this, I don't think I have to summarize this as outlook. I think particular larger scale data, more complex geometries is something to go into. And, and I really want to highlight this, there's a, a, a series of, of, of techniques that now want to actually go to full genetic lineage tracing. There's a thing called Gestalt or maybe SCAR trace, you might have heard from the Udenad lab. We actually introduced with CRISPR-Cas9, some type of modification in an upstream lineage. And then you sort of trace it downstream and you can actually follow potential downstream clonality of, of, of cells. This, this is, this is my, my institute. We're contributing, uh, uh, to the analysis group where all the, uh, involved, the human cell atlas, of course. There is, uh, maybe I should highlight this, uh, a series of, of meetings also in, in, in that feed coming up, where we try to standardize more of, of these things. And within Germany, we're also setting up a single cell genomics network. And I thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, I'm sorry. Questions? So when you put this ODE base models, you use the microphone?
Great talk. And so when you fit the ODE models on your diffusion coordinates, that's effectively what's going on in the day. You mentioned that you can include time, the sampling time into your likely formulation. But for the actual diffusion time core and reconstruction, do you use it there? Or there you assume you basically just plug in the cells as before. So that step is still sort of, you know, effectively your diffusion step is now replacing your dimensional reduction. So in a way that's the core space in which you're working and for that.
Exactly. So that's, so, so, so far the diffusion space we really just use for dimension reduction. And I, I think it's a kind of a necessary trick. I mean, you could try to formulate a very regularized, high dimensional version of that. But for us, this was the first way to go. I guess we can sort of increase by two or three dimensions, but not much.
But you could imagine, right? That knowing the real world sampling time, particularly in such a high resolus, beautiful time series, like you were describing at the end, that including information and recovering the diffusion time actually might improve that first step too, I guess.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to use the, the time information twice, at least for this initial one. But I, actually I, I agree. I, I mean, you know, I, I showed you on this, this one plot what we did for GPLVMs, that we sort of put it in as, as some, some type of bias. That was the first thing. Yeah, I mean, always whenever you use this additional information, you get a sort of more bias, but hopefully better fit, right? But I agree. Yeah, thanks. Good point. Maybe we should actually try that in that paper.
Hi, it's a super talk. In, when, in your papers, uh, for checking how many dimensions you would use in the diffusion map, informative dimensions, you, you mentioned this, this, uh, deltas function in which you. informative dimensions, you mentioned this delta's function in which you compare, you basically look for the jump in the egg and values corresponding to the different diffusion map. Sometimes, this is a little bit tricky, and you see in the diffusion map, you need maybe, you see the jump in between the second and third dimension, but you really need three. If you have more cell types, maybe you need more, and this is very difficult to visualize. Have you been working maybe in some better strategy to define which are the important dimensions?
Yeah, thanks for bringing this up. So I really should maybe stress this again for this, for this pseudo-time, we don't need dimension reduction, right? So for the visualization, obviously, like in PCA, you just take which ones you want for this pseudo-time. Essentially, you have this metric that automatically weights according to the eigenvalue strength. And if a low one, it just doesn't influence, so there you don't need to cut off. But for the other thing, yeah, it's a good point. Initially, we're very happy that we see all these transitions. But for example, for this 1.3 million data set, you can go to dimension 10, and you still see some sort of thing branching off. And now you start making these coordinate plots again, and you just don't understand much anymore, right? So I think for visualization, particularly in this complex geometries, this might not be the best way. So we do two different things. There has been ideas around, again, you just go to T-sne, something that forces you to visualize as much as possible in 2D, which is T-sne. But there's also other stuff such as spring-based embedding. Alon Klein recently has a toolbox out on that. Essentially, it's just nearest neighbor graph that you sort of want to make as flat as possible. And the tips you identify very well. Then you go towards a subset and maybe try to highlight that. But I think for us, the best working thing is really to look into this multi-branching, so this graph abstraction that sort of localizes you this branching tree architecture. So I think a heuristic for cutting off in diffusion map components, like I said with Siluet or some PCA, I wouldn't really go down that route. I would really go towards a subset that you're interested in downstream cells, particular development, you're always very good at identifying, and you sort of work your way upstream.